Good afternoon and welcome to the city council meeting for the city of International Falls for Monday, May the 6th, 2019. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ask the administrator to note the roll call with councillor Droba absent on a family vacation. Move to the agenda, and there is one addition to the agenda, and that is under the consent agenda. Item number four is to approve the travel and registration expenses for the city administrator to attend the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association Region Meeting in Emily on May 16th. What is your pleasure with the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by councillor Kraus to approve the agenda with the addition.
Second.
Second by councillor Buller. Discussion on the motion or the agenda? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes, motion is carried, agenda is approved with the addition. Thank you. Move to the approval of the minutes, and we have the regular city council meeting minutes of April the 15th, 2019. Councillor's pleasure.
Move.
Motion by councillor Deitch.
I'll second.
Motion by councillor Kraus. Discussion on the motion or the minutes? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried, minutes for April 15th are approved. And then we have the committee of the whole of the council on April the 22nd. Your pleasure with those minutes.
Move to accept.
Motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by councillor Deitch. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Would vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved for April the 22nd, council, committee of the whole of the council, thank you. And then item three under minutes is the joint meeting with the independent school district 361 school board and the recreation commission. Your pleasure with those minutes.
Move to accept.
Motion by councillor Kraus.
Second.
Second by councillor Deitch.
Mr. Mayor, wasn't Jeremy Hass barging at that meeting too?
No.
At the...
No, this was the joint meeting. Joint meeting? Okay.
You were thinking of the discussion with the rec hockey?
That's right, that was the rec hockey, that, sorry.
Thank you. Further discussion with regard to the minutes of the April 29th joint meeting with the school district and the rec commission? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes, motion is carried, those minutes are approved, thank you. Move to the resolution on transfers and accounts payable claims. We have transfers to fund number 101, the general fund, from the lodging and tax fund, And then we have accounts payable claims for the city of International Falls, $358,721.8. Airport commission claims of $727,060.52. We have phase two airport commission terminal project claims of $433,371.6. Runway reconstruction project at the airport, phase one, claims there are $49,870. Runway reconstruction project phase two claims of $100,315. And phase three claims on the runway reconstruction of $9,990. Your pleasure with the resolution on the transfers and payment of claims.
So moved.
Motion by councillor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by councillor Kraus. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Seeing and hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is approved, and including the payment of the claims and the transfers, thank you. We'll move to the audience portion of the meeting, and I'd like to begin by calling on Bob de Gross, superintendent of Voyagers National Park, please. And Bob, I don't know how that new microphone's gonna work, you may want to take it out of there.
Okay.
Or you can try being close to it.
Can people hear?
Yeah, I got one, yep.
Oh, second one.
Yes, yes.
There's two?
Test.
Here we go.
Yeah, there's two sheets, one page double-sided for each. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. As you may be aware, the park and actually the International Falls community are part of what is called the Heart of the Continent geotourism region, and that geotourism region extends from International Falls down to the south, including Duluth, and then up to the northeast encompassing Grand Portage and the Thunder Bay community. And the geotourism region is really a coalition of land managers within that region, as well as municipalities, interested parties, that work together to identify ways to really encourage connection, both for our local residents to our geotourism region, but also to encourage visitation to the area as well. As part of the Heart of the Continent partnership, the coalition of all of those interested parties, we're looking at two items over the next couple of years. One is an event for this year, and one is an initiative for the coming years. And so, the event that is taking place in 2019 throughout the geotourism area is a Bike the Heart event, where local communities, or interest groups, or bike shops are going and developing a recreational biking opportunity. And so, we're looking at hopefully hosting one here in the International Falls area. As you might be aware, there's a lot of opportunities along the North Shore and everything, and I just wanted to make sure that if all the interested communities were willing to consider having an event here in our area as well. So, we're looking at September 28th, so it will be a one-day event, and we're looking at three different rides that we want to encourage people to do. The primary ride is a long-distance ride that we're proposing to do from International Falls to Little Fork, across Ray, across to Ray on 217, and then back to International Falls on Highway 53. Obviously, this is a major road ride, 55 miles in length, I will not be riding it, but there are people out there that are bike enthusiasts that look for events like this. And so, starting with a very small volunteer group, we're just in the beginning phases of trying to determine the details of this, and we've identified three options, this long-distance ride that I just mentioned, and then on the back you'll see two shorter-distance rides. The second is a ride that would incorporate utilizing the established bike trail from International Falls out to the Island View area, and out to the Rainy Lake Visitor Center, which is a 24-mile round-trip ride, and that would be more of a family fun ride opportunity. And then the third opportunity is again utilizing the established bike trail from International Falls, and then just going through the Rainier community, which would be about a 10-mile round-trip ride, and that would be more for novice bikers and things like that. The purpose for this, of course, is to just encourage people to recognize the biking facilities that we have in our community, and also to try to encourage visitation to the area, letting people know that there are biking opportunities that are out there that they can take advantage of. So that's something that we're trying to coordinate. Again, it would be September 28th, obviously it would take some EMS and police services assistance in a variety of different ways, both probably from the I-Falls community, but also the Koochessin County as a whole, and from other volunteer opportunities and things like that. So, this month I was really just going out to all of the different boards and councils to make them aware that this is something that a small group of people in the community are trying to coordinate and things, so. So that's one item, and then the next item is, again, the Heart of the Continent partnership is working collaboratively, the land management areas within the Heart of the Continent are working to seek international dark sky park designation through the International Dark Sky Association. And this is just an opportunity for us to really tout the spectacular night sky resources that we already have here within the Heart of the Continent region. It's probably some of the darkest night sky resources in the country, both the United States and of course the northwestern portion of Canada as well. So, we're working over the next year or two to seek that designation, and then once we get that designation through the International Dark Sky Association, really and truly it is just the park service and the other land management agencies making the commitment that whatever facilities we have and that we're responsible for managing, that we will always take into consideration the potential light impacts at night that those facilities incur and things. It has no requirements for local neighboring communities or neighboring residents or anything like that, other than just really us, the park service, working and messaging in the local community, in the local community, the importance of this resource, and encouraging people to consider, you know, as they update or change infrastructure, that they consider new equipment that minimizes light impact to the extent possible, so. So I just wanted to share these two initiatives with the town board and everything, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Bob, yes, questions on the part of the council?
I think it's great. Thank you.
All right, there's a lot of things that still have to be planned related to the biking event, but we're hoping to aim for September 28th, and hopefully it will be a great event. One of the things that we might be doing, depending on the number of people who register, is determining whether we will have the staging area for all the activities out at the park headquarters, or in town here at Smokey Bear, and as those details are clarified, we'll come back to the board and everything, and get the appropriate permits or permissions that we need.
I guess I, a couple of questions with regard to the Bike the Heart event, do we have, do you have a committee that's going to be helping to pursue this, or?
We have a group of dedicated volunteers, about five or six of us, that are just very interested in moving forward in this right now, and as we get more details worked out, we're hoping to encourage more volunteer assistance with the planning effort of it and everything. And we do know that we want to reach out to the recreational, or the, I forget the name of the committee, through the county and everything, that deals with the recreational opportunities in the...
Recreation Commission?
Recreation Commission, thank you very much, yeah.
The school district and the city are together on?
Yeah, yeah, so.
And then I guess my next question would be, you know, I see that the starting area may be Smokey Bear Park, and I don't know, you know, what kind of numbers we might get, and would it be necessary to block off a block area to start the bike ride, or, you know, just trying to think of some of the logistics that may be necessary?
Yeah, and there are a lot of logistics that have to be clearly defined. I guess this month, my primary objective is just to assure that the different municipalities are okay with us moving forward on this. I know we'll have to reach out to the city police and to the county sheriff's office to determine the details about that. We are proposing that we do a registration, and perhaps we can actually just cap the number of people that are going to be involved, so that we don't get overrun with too much interest maybe. But there are details about road traffic control and safety considerations that we have to take into mind, so.
Very good. We will look forward to certainly helping with this event, and let us know what we can do as a city to help promote it.
Yep, I know, as I said, the next steps, the next county commission meeting, I'm going to be going to their meeting to make them aware of it, and get their concurrence with it as well, and Little Fork, of course, I have to go down there and see that they're on board with it as well, so.
Sounds wonderful.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your time today.
Further from the audience, others that want to speak. Jared?
Mayor Council, do you want to talk to you?
Please, yeah.
Test.
I am here to talk to you about the demolition of the TP property. We first initiated discussions in October of 2018, but with the winter season coming, discussions were halted until March. We have made two different proposals to the city with money on the table. With no changes to the current demolition agreement, we know in the past six years what commercial demolition has cost the property owners of International Falls. We took steps ourselves due to the outcry of our community over blight, by removing a burnt structure that had sat since September of 2017. This is a very hot topic right now in our community, and we continue to go without resolution. Now with making two proposals to the city, last week, an article came out to the businesses and citizens of International Falls, saying that the city would tear down buildings at no cost. I am very confused on what we are supposed to think or do. We are trying to move forward with cleaning up the city and looking towards economic development, but our hands are being tied by the city that in years past had no problems tearing down commercial buildings for others. We have followed the city's demolition application, got all appropriate signatures, and here I am today looking for answers.
So you're looking for an answer with regard to the proposal that you've made to the city?
Well, not really answered, I just, this has been continuing to go on and on, and somehow there needs to be resolution to this, we can't just continue to keep kicking the can down the road. It's, you know, we've, it's been a month since we brought our last proposal to administration, and we have not heard anything back. You know, it's very frustrating, you know, everybody here knows how upset the public is on the way the community looks right now. We're trying to take steps to get the ball moving, and here we are. In the past year, there's been a couple of commercial buildings that were torn down. They came, they handed the application, boom, it's done. We've been dealing with this for months, and we can't get an answer. Very frustrating.
I think there's two primary reasons. First of all, we're not able to take anything into our dump ground right now, it's still very, very wet, and so to be moving trucks into there would be a problem, so I don't know that there's any immediate crisis to getting this done, that's number one. Number two, we're also under the impression that you were working with the state fire marshal on the possibility of utilizing the building for some burns, and so that we held back on doing anything further there because we thought that you were dealing with the state fire marshal there.
And that was one thing that we brought up in our latest proposal that we brought to the city and said that, you know, we want an answer moving forward, if this is going to happen, are we going to, you know, is the city willing to do this? Because, you know, nobody's gave us an answer that they're willing to do this. You know, in the buildings they tore down last summer wasn't an issue. They turned in the application, city said, yes, we're going to do this. Nobody's given us an answer that they're going to help us tear down this building. You know, like I said, in the past, nobody's paid a dime for this. We've had money on the table since day one, and we can't get an answer.
I don't think it's exactly true that nobody has paid a dime in the past, I think that there has been, there may have been several that didn't pay, but there has been some that have paid. Also, those areas that, where the city has removed buildings, we have required them to fill in the basements, take steps to ensure that there's not going to be any open areas. I don't know what is underneath the TP there, I have no idea.
We agreed to that in October of last year in our first proposal.
Okay.
So...
Jared, I would like to see this move along also. If you filled out all the paperwork, you met all the requirements that they have set for you so far, you should be at least entitled to an answer, yes, we're going to do it, no, we're not, we're going to look into this a little bit more, whatever it may be. I agree, the process should be moving along.
Yeah, and like I said, we just, we have plans in place that we want to move forward with this, but we're sitting here trying to wait for a response from you guys, and we're not getting one. And, like I said, I've talked to the previous business owners that the city has done demolition for, and they've said that there's been no pocket expense to them, so...
The question would be, what's the next step? Is the city responsible for the next step, or is Jared, who's responsible for the next step? As he says, he's been working on this for quite some time, and since I came on the council, it's been a major issue. And other than them taking the top of the building off, I haven't seen anything happen.
Well, I think the, again, you know, there's no, if you...
A yes-no answer, doesn't rely on the landfill, doesn't rely on the fire, if they're going to use it as a burned building, if the fire department or whoever's not going to do it, that should be also stated, if they're going to do it, it should be stated. Somebody's got to make a move here, and I understand, they're waiting very patiently.
I guess, city attorney, can you help us there? I know that you've had some discussions with regard to this issue, is there anything that you would want to add?
Well, we met, we met last week, you and I and administrator Anderson, to discuss a response, and how we were going to move forward, and so I think the ball's in our court to respond to the Baldwin's, and, you know, we should be able to do that very soon, I would think. But they certainly deserve a response, and, you know, hopefully we can come up with a resolution that everybody can live with to improve that property and get going on it.
Will the response be feasible within the next week or two, so they have an idea what's happening?
I think so, I can't speak, and I, my recollection is that administrator Anderson was going to draft a response that I was going to review, and, but I, I don't know about a timetable.
May I?
Please, councillor Kraus.
Jared, when did you guys hand in the application, do you know? Or can you ballpark it?
It was around October of 2018.
Okay, so last year, and then you restarted negotiations this spring sometime, you had a conversation?
March, yeah.
In March, so here we are in May. I don't think it's unreasonable to expect a response of some sort.
Yeah, I mean, we want to get this ball rolling, we don't want to continue to have to go through this, come here and try and get answers, because, like I said, this has not been this big a process for anybody else. I mean, we took steps to take off the burn portion of the hotel that we necessarily didn't have to do, but we wanted to make the community look better. We can go on Facebook and see what it says about the TP, you know, we took over ownership of that in November of last year, and we couldn't do anything with them, or we probably would have, because now that reflects us, and we don't want that. We want to have a decent piece of property that can create economic development, get back on the tax rolls, and I think it's a win-win for all of us, but for some reason it's been tied up.
Well, I think, again, there's probably been no rush because we know we can't get in there and take it down, it wouldn't be for at least another month or more.
And I understand that, but that's not the issue here, the issue is you have to answer that you're going to do it. I mean, as long as we know you're going to do it, I can live with that, but if we are still in limbo in a month from now, where are we at?
Oh, I think certainly we'll have an answer for you before then, but I think also, and I would ask the city administrator and the city attorney, I believe that such a response needs to be approved by the city council. Is that not correct, or?
Well, mayor, in this particular case, I think that is absolutely prudent course of action, and let me just clarify some points here, so when did you actually close on the property, in January?
November.
You closed and purchased it, and were owners in November?
Yes.
And we've been having discussions, as Mr. Baldwin has indicated, about the city possibly demoing that. I provided a copy of the full demolition policy to Mr. Baldwin today, and in that particular policy, you know, he's indicated that there's been some inconsistencies in how the city's handled it, and the policy calls for the city to demo facilities that are considered type A and type B, which are essentially single-family houses or garages, or duplex family houses and garages at no cost to the property owner, which is what we represented in the notification that we provided in the water utility bills here last month. The other types of structures, the policy indicates that a hardship must be demonstrated in order for the city to participate and be involved. And essentially what that entails is that a property owner has to get a couple of forms signed by a contractor that says that they won't do the demolition work as a private contractor, for whatever reason they're choosing not to do that, which would create an opportunity for the city to do that, rather than competing with the private sector, then the city will, in the public interest, to try and get substandard buildings demolished and removed from the, from the community. In this particular case, we had set up a meeting on April 12th with the Baldwin's to discuss their proposal, which we hadn't seen, and through events on their side of the table, they could not meet on April 12th, so they submitted a written proposal to us, it was a Friday, and then that information was forwarded from the city attorney to our office, and as the city attorney indicated, we met last week to discuss how we were going to respond to that, and the city attorney was correct, is that I was going to respond to their proposal, which I have a copy of here about the city's response. And I think you're correct to your question, is that we want the city council to approve how we're going to proceed. Right now, our staff is estimating, and it's only an estimate, that as many as 50 truckloads will be necessary to demolish the existing debris from the site. I think we want to do some, and take into account other elements of the project, in that the city does not want to be in the position that we fill the site with clean fill material after the demolition debris is removed, because we don't want to assume the liability for any building that's constructed on there to have substandard compaction or other requirements for that. So that would be something that's not addressed in the demolition policy, and that we've tried to do by a redevelopment agreement in the past. So, that consideration will be part of our response back to the Baldwin's, and I would anticipate having something on the council's agenda May 20th, hopefully with some discussions with them in advance of that, that they are in agreement with, so the council can act on it, May 20th. And as you pointed out, we won't be in a position to take anything to our demolition facility probably until next month, given the wet conditions and the frost that's still on the ground.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
It's my understanding that in that proposal, you had talked about the backfill, and you guys were going to take care of that, correct?
Yeah, my brother's had conversations with the city attorney, and we've had, I've had numerous conversations with the city administrator, and saying, we're fully obligated to backfill that property. And, I mean, we've got, you know, plans in the works right now to get that backfilled. I mean, we're talking actually about starting the stockpile fill in the back property, so it's ready. And, but, I mean, at what point do we put pen to paper and agree to this? I mean, Ken just said that approximately 50 loads are going to go to the demo site. Fifty times 50, or 50 times 50 loads is $2,500, correct me if I'm wrong. And our proposal that we have to the city right now is a lot more than $2,500.
I misspoke, it's 200 loads at $50, so it'd be about $10,000 is what the estimated expense was, but that's an estimate on the part of our public works speak commission.
And our proposal last October was for $10,000, that was denied by the city.
Mayor?
Please.
I guess I would like... I guess I would like, like it noted in the minutes, that there will be a response to the Baldwin's within one week of the city's decision, and then also noted that some type of action will come before the board at the next meeting.
I would agree with that.
I guess the one question I have, Jared, is, is the annexation piece, which is on the east side of the alley, is that to be demolished also?
We are not asking the city to partake in that right now.
Okay. Jerry's got it.
Excuse me, yes.
One thing I have there, the contractors that were supposed to get to sign off on the, that was done back in that time period too?
Yeah, the hardship form was filled out back in October, early November of last year.
Bowman's and Edgar both signed off that they didn't want the job.
Okay, very good. So, we will have a, it'll be, we'll be in contact with you before the next city council meeting. It'll be before the city council at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Or may I? Can I ask him a question?
With regard to?
Well, Mr. Yogi, is this the rulings that you put out now, they seem like they were different when I was on the council. Is this a newer ruling?
Well, the ruling, Mr. Mayor, council...
The policy?
The ruling would be the demolition policy, and the policy's dated November 12th of 2002, so the policy's been, the written policy hasn't changed since 2002. Although I have asked our council, or our committee members, to propose revisions to this, because it's dated, the $50 fee is something that goes back 17 years ago, so obviously the fees need to be revisited, if, as well as the process. And I've asked a couple of our staff to provide some recommendations for revisions to the policy, which is in process.
May I?
Thank you, please.
I would just like to add that I would like to see this, this happen. I've had conversations with the Baldwin's. I think it's a good deal. I think getting the property, you know, I realize that the landfill isn't going to open up until probably June, but to have everything set up so that as soon as it's open, we can get it going, and they can get it backfilled, and that land's going to have to settle for some time before you can start to develop it, but I think the longer we wait to get it demolished and get it done, the further out it puts any development on that property. So, we need development. We need, it's a very centralized location. It's a very good location, and it's a real eyesore. And tourist season's going to start here in about, what, 15 days? So, it's time, in my opinion, to move forward on it sooner than later.
Well, I would also share with the council that the city attorney has secured five buildings in the community that are going to be removed, and the neighbors have been waiting for those for well over a year, but it's taken us time to go to court and secure the removal of those, and so those are on the list to be done also.
I understand.
Thank you. So, further from the audience, anyone that wants to speak?
I would like to speak, please.
Please, come on up.
Okay.
I'll state your name, Julie, please.
My name is Julie Malmstrom.
Sixth Street?
904 Sixth.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to discuss the parking situation that has been happening. I know that the council has put a lot of pressure on our peace officers to do more tickets, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Were you the only one?
I'm the main push on that.
I'm the main point?
Yes.
Okay. And they have been doing their jobs.
They have been excellent.
Very well. But what I have a real problem with is why, I guess I want to say favoritism given to the mill for the shutdown and no tickets over there. Why was that? Why did you not stress for them to have to take it over there?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Chief Mastin, thank you.
In regards to that, I was contacted by PCA in anticipation of this shutdown, and all the vendors that were coming to town, and the workers that were coming to town, and so they requested and made a pre, an arrangement with me in advance that we would give them leeway through this shutdown, because there wasn't alternative parking for the operations that were going to be going on there. So, I made that decision. I own that.
Well, that was, I love you, dear Rich, but that was wrong.
I understand.
Yeah. You know, and I know it was brought up to me, well, you know, they spent a lot of money on this stuff. You know what? So do we. You know, we pay taxes. We spend a lot of money, so I just don't think, and even with the Bass tournament coming up, and if you're going to do that, then I think that organization should maybe donate a little bit of money to the city for getting free parking, because in the meantime, you guys are still giving us tickets, you know? I'm guilty too. I'm a guy. I paid it, you know? But, and if they don't, and you give them free parking or whatever, I think that that amount of time that they're here, or a week, or three days, like the Bass tournament, whatever, I don't think any ticket should be given to anybody then. You know, it's tough. You know, people are really upset, but they're scared to come here, you know?
I'm well aware that people are upset. We hear about it quite often.
I mean, after yesterday, after yesterday?
And I will, I'll speak on that as well. Yesterday, yesterday, we...
Let the chief speak.
We were complaint, we were complaint driven over there yesterday.
Oh, I know.
So, citizens called in and wanted something done about that. And as far as the PCA thing goes, in considering whether or not to give them that leeway, I had to think about alternative parking for all those people. Where could we put them? What was, what were my options, you know, so?
Well, there was still, because I drive around, you know, I drive around a lot, and there's still a lot of parking over by Mulch Lovers. They could have parked in that lot with the...
May I?
Yes, please.
The contractor entrance is off of the end of Eighth Avenue. They can't park over. They could park over there, but they would have to walk all the way over. The contractor entrance is over here. That's where they have to go on to the mill property. They can't go through the turnstile at the guard shack. They have to go here. So, they would have to walk.
Walking doesn't hurt anybody, you know? Even if it's a little ways, no, I'm just saying...
I have to respectfully disagree. I think it was a good deal.
But I mean, I saw they were in the two-hour parking. They were in the handicap. They really shouldn't be in handicap.
No, they shouldn't be.
And they were. And I'm not going to lie to you, you know, because I just said I didn't. But I just think that if that's going to, you know, if they're going to get free reigns for legal organizations, whatever, then don't give anybody tickets all day in time. Just a suggestion, you know, because it just is kind of unfair, you know?
Sure. But the calendar park...
I'm guilty too.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Please.
But the calendar parking is working. I drive around every morning, and our law enforcement is doing a great job. Right now, you drive around in the morning, and maybe you'll see two or three tickets, where before you'd see 10, 15 tickets. This is working. I teach driver's ed. I have kids trying to go through two cars sitting side by side on a street, and that's just asking for trouble. If somebody's in that car, and they open the door, whatever it may be, there's no room for three cars and a door opening. And that's one of the reasons I'm pushing this.
I know. Over at Bacchus. I was the one that pushed for one-sided parking. I watched the ambulance try to get to somebody that was laying on the steps.
Right, and it's working. We may have some headaches, and I apologize to the police department for the headaches that I'm causing them, but I'm going to continue to push this.
Oh, I understand that, yeah. And so, is that the only reason? So, because you can't get through when the students are...
Well, that's one of the reasons. I'm just one person. There's other cars that come through those same streets. I'm coming through with kids.
Well, some of the streets ain't wide. Sixth Street's ain't wide. Ninth, Ninth Street is terrible.
That may be true.
Yeah. Well, I was just, you know, bringing up some suggestions, and I just felt, you know, I didn't know Richy were the boss.
I thought I was the solution, but apparently not.
I know. It just, because people are upset. They saw that they weren't getting tickets, and then they were getting tickets, and, you know?
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Please, no, go ahead.
We have the, we have the right or the option within the city ordinances, or the city council does certainly, to suspend calendar parking by resolution at any time, or I believe we can postpone calendar parking for certain events. So, when you touch on Bass tournaments or shutdowns, or things of those nature, of that nature, possibly, that's things we should plan ahead for and consider in the future.
Well, and I would say, you know, Package and Corporation of America has a large parking lot on the north side of Second Street. They also have one on the south side of Second Street, behind the ban shell. Those are used widely during public events, like the Fourth of July, like the Bass championship, the, when we have the Labor Day picnic. Those areas, folks park and walk across the street, and so PCA allows that to happen. I think sometimes we can, we can give a little bit the other way, too. I think it was a good decision, Chief. Thank you. Sorry, Julie, further?
Well, no, no. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, I'm just trying to make it fair for everybody in here.
And we thought it was very fair.
You know?
Thank you.
Well, yeah, yeah. So, I just, I fight for my community, but I mean, I just, you know, I saw a little favoritism, whatever, so, that's all.
Okay, I disagree.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Further from the audience.
Is this on any issue?
Pardon?
Is this on any issue?
You're open.
Any issue, Bob?
Any issue.
Okay, Bob Dunbar, right there. I'm helping out on the community garden this year across the street, and we have a 300 gallon tank over there. I want to put a pump over there, so instead of people hauling their water, we can get a hose over there, they can just water their plots. The city owns those outlets right over here. I think it's probably for librarians to plug their cars in in the winter.
Talking about electrical now, or are you talking?
Yeah, electric outlets, yeah.
I guess I'm not familiar.
He's in the community garden park over here across, with the library parking.
Where is, where is the electrical, is it on the alley there?
The parking on the alley has power.
But I'm just wondering if we can run a cord for one of those over and use it for the pump.
I guess I'd want to have the city electrician determine whether or not there's capable power there to run an electric motor. I don't know.
Yeah, it don't take much. We do it with a small generator, so it doesn't take much electricity.
Okay. Certainly, we can inquire, and so that would be the plug-ins on the alley at...
Yeah, we just need one, you know?
And that would be in the 800 block?
Yeah, right near.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And there is a tank there already?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Okay, one other thing. Joe Kraus's dad, talked to him. He said we could run a hose across the alley, fill the tank, but could the city give him a break? Because I know the more water you use, the more your sewer bill's going to be. But they could look at his bill and figure out about what his usage is, and then give him a break from there, and we'll be paying for the extra water. The community garden club, yeah.
I guess we would, we would need to have some kind of record taken of the amount of water that gets, that gets taken there, so the council can certainly consider that.
Yeah. Well, it's a 300 gallon tank is what we have over there, but it's not going to be filling up every week, you know? And as far as the rains every day or so, we hope not, but...
Okay. We can certainly consider that.
Okay.
Very good.
One other thing I was just going to ask. Has the Women's Garden Club, have they approached you on any of the plots?
They haven't approached the city council, but I believe they've talked to the street commissioner, but I only know that from offhanded discussions. It's not direct. Don't know that for a fact. I thought that they might be taking care of the one at the end of 11th Street and 11th Avenue, and that the street commissioner was ordering the flowers for that. Now, that's, again, more hearsay than, than fact.
I would, if we don't get anybody to do the one at Arisans and the one at the Chamber, I could probably do those two, if the city pays for the flowers, you know?
Well, it'd be good to get with Ted Broca. I know that he has money in his budget for that, but we would need to make sure that he's ordering those flowers. Counselor Deech, please.
I did receive a name of a lady in an organization that might be interested, but after talking with you and what you have just said to the audience, I did not pursue it.
Okay.
That's about all I got.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Just come and talk about the parking violations.
Do you want to speak into the microphone and give your name and address, please?
Don Hughes. I'm concerned with some of the way that you change that parking now. During the day, you get tickets for parking. But it used before, you parked overnight, you needed tickets, but now, now they, it's all day long, you get a ticket. And then started that new, the Backus, a lot of fights from people that said, you got tickets for parking on the wrong side of the street there. But they got big dudes, they have over 1,000 people. You know, they take advantage of it. They have money there, $20 a ticket.
No, nobody took advantage. Down, the ordinance and the city has given a number of warnings with regard to the calendar parking in the community, and we have, it runs 24 hours a day, all the time, seven days a week. The only time that there is a grace period that you do not have to is from 6:00 in the evening until midnight. You can park...
I'm pretty sure about that.
Okay.
I had a friend come over and visit. She never related. She said, you know, I'm popular with the, I saw her parking ticket on her window, and she said, you couldn't have asked her to go there to talk to them.
She was on the wrong side of the street?
She didn't, yeah, she didn't realize that they were parking on the wrong side of the street.
Signs are there, though, that...
Yeah, signs are there.
That tell you the calendar parking.
But I almost, almost caught you, because I was parked, where the earned car was, and I had to go take a run, take a park. She had a ticket earned car. But the people were dressed backless. There were a lot of them that were pretty mad about that. She needs tickets, and you go to a, to do it, the back stuff down there.
But they were parked on the wrong side of the street?
Yeah, because they're parked on both sides of the street. There's nothing, you tell people, they need lots of parking. But they were, people raised things down.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
On Ninth Avenue side of Backus, there is no calendar parking. It's on Fifth Street, on the north side of Fifth Street, there's no parking ever, period. It's not, that's not calendar. That's, you can't ever park there, period. So, that's what the, that's what the ruling, and that's been like that for a year and a half. The north side of Fifth Street is, there's no parking there ever.
Well, they couldn't find a spot to park.
But that's, but that's not, that wasn't just a one-time, that's, and it's not calendar. That's, you can't park there ever. It's not just calendar parking. There's no, that's no parking zone. You can park on the south side of the street, but on the north side of Fifth Street, that's, that's no parking ever.
We're on the, there's Ninth Avenue.
There's no, there's no calendar parking on Ninth Avenue on that side, on the church side.
No, but you can go down south on the...
Yep.
South side, south.
Yep.
Parking, both sides. I probably were the male, because I see the whole pile of cars when we went to drive to it. We didn't go to the back still.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I would say again, that obviously our officers didn't go out of their way to go over there and write these tickets. There were folks parked all over, down Sixth Street over to Seventh Street, and they were parked in violation, and citizens called in complaints, and we have an obligation to respond when that happens, and that's simply how it happened.
Well, I understand that. All of this, come through, talk to officers. They told me... me it's Jordan Dayman, six o'clock, when he did grace to midnight.
Well, and if, if you're parking in front of someone's home and it's the wrong side of the street, they have a right to complain.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know that, and sometimes you don't think, when you get older, you don't, your minds are a little different.
All right.
Let's get back to you, or...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further from the audience. Thank you. We'll move to the, and there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting if you want to express yourself to the council. The consent agenda is the next item. There's four items on the consent agenda. Approve the necessary travel expenses for employees to attend the Minnesota Rural Water Association hydrant repair training session in Deer River on May 30th. Item two is the 2019 license renewal for Mickey Ballinger doing business as O for Sweet Catering. It's an itinerant restaurant license. Item three is approve the cooperative fire protection agreement for wildland fires between the Minnesota DNR and the International Falls Fire Department, and authorize a signature. And item four is to approve the travel and registration expenses for the city administrator to attend the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association training in Emily on May 16th. Counsel's pleasure with the consent agenda, or do we want any of those items removed for separate discussion? Chair would then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to accept.
Motion by Counsel Kraus.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Buller. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And although yes, motion is carried, and consent agenda is approved. We'll go to new business. Item number one is to request approval for the independent school district, 361, sixth grade students to paint the drain stencils at various catch basin locations with the Public Works Department and the Police Department personnel, May 21st, with May 24th as a possible rain day. Jolynn Simon, Kooching County Soil and Water Conservation District. Good evening and welcome. And you got the sixth graders going out and stenciling some more catch basins?
We do, yes. Thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. I work for the Kooching Soil and Water Conservation District, and we have a grant. Is this on?
I don't think it's on.
Testing.
Yep.
There we go.
Thank you.
I work for the Kooching Soil and Water Conservation District, and we have a grant with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency that allows us to do public participation events, and this is the third year we've been doing this, and Mr. Anderson has been, has been promoting this to you the last two years. So, we've been doing this here in the falls and also over in Fort Francis. Actually, we're able to work across the border with this grant. This year, we are planning to expand out into Rainier as well, and we're also asking to stencil along Main Street, well, Third Street, technically. And so, I'm coming to you to just discuss the basic details. It's a grant that I'm partnering with an organization out of Canora on, and that's through the Lake of the Woods Watershed Sustainability Foundation. They have a very long name. And you'll see on, on your documents that you have in front of you, we've created a logo that we, we've united the watershed together in, and that's got the U.S. and Canadian flag on it. And so, we'll be giving the students some giveaways with that logo on it, and there's a website attached to that. In this event, in addition to painting a message that says Dump No Waste, Drains, Drains to River, we will also have the students be picking up litter as they go along, sweeping in front of the stencils, and we have door hangers, which you should have a picture of the front and back, which explains to local residents and businesses what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. So, this, all of these things have been happening two years running, and we are just looking to expand that project and also ask, as in the past, if the police force can also help patrol to keep students safe as we're out there on May 21st.
Thank you, Jolynn. Any questions on the part of the council? Then a motion would be in order to approve the stenciling of drains throughout the community, and especially Third Street?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counsel Buller?
Second.
Second by Counsel Deech. Discussion on the motion or the stenciling?
May I?
Please.
Jolynn, I just have to say, this is awesome.
Thank you.
Further? Not a question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Approval is given. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Item number two is to approve the vendor use of the Smokey Bear Park for the Fun Food Factory, Trina Martinez, and I know this is a post-action, as you were given permission to be out there, with some misunderstanding by all of us, and so we need a motion to approve the use of the Smokey Bear Park by the Fun Food Factory.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Kraus.
Second.
Second by Counsel Buller. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes, motion is carried, approval is given. Thank you. Item number three under new business is to co-sponsor the Kooching Labor Assembly Labor Day Picnic on Monday, September the 2nd, 2019, and approve the closure of Third Street and the use of Smokey Bear Park. And Mr. Thorpe is not here this evening. Counselor Kraus, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Thorpe had contacted me this afternoon. He actually is driving the softball team today on an unexpected trip, but just asked that we look at the application and approve it, and I move that we accept this application. I do believe this is the 10th year in a row that they've done the Labor Day Picnic, and I think it's a great thing.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Kraus to approve the use of Smokey Bear Park and the closure of Third Street for the Labor Day Picnic.
Second.
Second by Counsel Deech. Discussion on the motion? Any or none question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes, motion is carried, and approval is given. Thank you. Item number four is to approve the hiring of the summer employee roster. And that would include both the, for the street department and for the fire department, those employees, and they can read the names if that's necessary. Let's see, we have Brittany Foss, we have Tanner Sethar, Ryan Todd, Armando Borios, Alexis Erickson, Gus Lawrenson, Taylor Nelson, Mason Buller, Dylan Holt, Ben Luchek, Olivia Wright, Abby Koscheck, Fred Bartlett, Kane Koscheck, Chad Winterstrand, and Emma Gilbert. Those would be the names of the summer students working for the city. Your pleasure with those. Motion by Counsel Deech to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Kraus. Questions or discussion? Not a question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, one's my grandson.
Very good. And I would vote yes, and so there would be three for the motion and one abstention. Motion carries, and the summer employee roster is approved. Item number five under new business is to appoint Scott Worley as a part-time police officer from the list of eligible officers effective May 7, 2019. Chief Maston, any comments, please?
Not really, Mr. Mayor. I think the council's pretty well aware that we're running out of part-time assistance, and Scott is on the list of eligibles and ready to go, so we'd like to put him to work.
Comes with good background and experience.
A little more experience than we're, than we usually get in part-time help, yes.
Wonderful.
I'll move.
Motion by Counsel Kraus to approve the appointment of Scott Worley as a part-time police officer.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Buller. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes, motion is carried, and appointment is approved. Thank you. Item number six is to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of the Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant, number 1033581, effective July the 1st. And this is in a, I think it's a two-year term on these grants, and the airport receives maintenance funds to help operate the airport. Your pleasure with that resolution.
Also moved.
Motion by Counsel Buller?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Kraus. Questions or discussion? Any or none question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I would vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the maintenance grant contract is approved. Thank you. Any other new business? Not seeing any, we would move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator, please.
Mayor, just an informational item. I think we'll work based on the comments that we received tonight. I just wanted to say that I think we'll be proposing to the Public Works Committee some thoughts about clarifying when we want to waive parking requirements for special events either, and either adopt a policy that addresses that. I don't think there was any wrong decisions made, and I think the chief made the right decision for PCA, and, you know, our principal concern is making sure that all of our roadways are open for emergency vehicle traffic as well as normal day-to-day traffic, and so I think we want to present some suggestions to the Public Works Committee to consider and then bring to the full city council on calendar parking, and perhaps something as simple as just begging the no parking signs during events where we want to allow parking on both sides, and it's not going to be everywhere, and it's something that we need to address and bring forth to the city council. So, I don't have any other further items to report unless there's any questions I can answer.
Questions for the city administrator? All right, that will go to the Public Works Committee, and they, we have a meeting scheduled for May the 16th at 1:00 P.M. Thank you. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just would report, as came out earlier, that we did meet last week and discussed at some length the Baldwin proposal for the TP Motel and trying to come up with a resolution, and, you know, I think that there, and I met with Jared earlier today in my office, and, you know, I think that hopefully we'll be able to come up with a resolution that's fair, that everybody can live with, for the council to take action on the next meeting, and it's always hard with these things because each situation is unique and needs to be addressed, and I think clearly there were some aspects of their most recent proposal that are not going to be acceptable to the council, and that I, as the city attorney, would not be recommending to the council. On the other hand, I think we're all in agreement that we want to see improvements made there and the situation rectified, and we recognize that the Baldwin family has made a substantial investment and has taken steps of their own to correct a bad situation, and I'm confident that we'll be able to come up with a solution that will be a win-win for everybody, but it's, I guess that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Questions for the city attorney? Go to department heads. Chief Maston, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I've included in your packet the monthly activity report for the Police Department for the month of April. As is typical of the spring, we are busy with annual trainings, recertifications. We had our, a good chunk of us had to go to the Emergency Vehicle Operations Course, Driving Around Phones Course. It's always interesting. We had our Spring Firearms Recertification, Use of Force Simulator Training, Annual Use of Force Hazardous Materials and Blunt Board Pathogens, so a lot of training in April. As far as general business, we had 433 calls per service, conducted 170 traffic stops, issued 74 citations, assisted the ambulance 12 calls, took 16 individuals into custody, and generated 110 new case reports for the month, and all of that is broke down for your review, and the ZERCA reports attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have on them.
Thank you. Questions for Chief Maston? Very good report, a lot of activity for the month of April, and going to get busier.
Already has.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. City Administrator, are you going to report on the fire department? I know the chief is out on training.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I can do that. As you pointed out, the chief is in transit to training, and he cannot be here this evening, and he has presented a written report for the month of April, and you can see that the fire department had five call-outs in April. Two of those were city responses, three were rural fire responses, and they also conducted a fire monthly meeting on April 18th. They did regular business, and then they did some training with the Journeyman Fire Lab that was here. For the ambulance, you can see that in 2019, in April, there was 55 911 calls. It compares to 48 in the same month in 2018. We did 30 transfers, so the total was 85. Our total activity for both 911 calls and transfers in 2019 is 426 through the month of April for that year, or for the year 2019. The monthly meeting and training was held on the 9th, and then they had skill station training as part of that. You'll notice that last month, or last meeting, I think, was one of the first meetings where they did more extensive information on ambulance runs based on time of day, and that information's included for your, for general purposes, for you to see, so...
Questions with the city administrator or the fire department report? Very good. Thank you. Let's see, Building Inspector, do you have anything this evening?
No, I don't, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And Deputy City Administrator?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see, go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Any of the committees that want to report? Please.
Just a statement that ad hoc BLITE committee has a meeting tomorrow at 4:00. We have several members that are on that, on that committee. I sent a notice out about a week and a half ago. I'll probably send one out in the morning again or tonight. I would also request that the Building Inspector, Mr. Meyer, be there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. So, tomorrow at 4:00 is the BLITE committee?
Right.
Thank you. Further on council committees, boards, and commissions, already said the Public Works Committee will be meeting the following week on May 16 at 1:00 here in the council chambers. You have the mayor's report for the past several weeks at, between meetings. Move to the audience again. Is anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Thank you. Note the correspondence that's listed in the agenda, and I would just note that on the fourth item down, the Kooching County Land and Forestry Department, city received checks for $25,886.77 for tax forfeit lands, and I sent a letter of thank you to Nate Hyville for that, so always... So always great to get those additional dollars. There's nothing further to come before the council. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May the 20th at 4:30 p.m. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you.